And see.
What Kat does, Kat contacted me shortly after early last Monday last week. Instead of some machines, they have some machine, used machines with snow equipment available. Their twenty fifteen model, but with under two thousand hours on them. Now they're unavailable till the end of March, so the hours could go up, but I can't imagine we're gonna go up significantly in just a couple months, so.
Some same ones we got now fifteen.
We have twenty fif- the, the first cast we bought were twenty bit fifteen, that was their new, I think that was when twelve and threes came out. Uh, with joysticks, and so they're offering all wheel drive units for, well, with price other than being official, but. Sounds like they're gonna be pretty cost effective machines for us, and as AJ could maybe contest. Just confer- he can confirm that our equipment's getting old and breaking down frequently, so. It might be something for us to venture into and look into what we do with these machines, it's because they're all wheel driving, they had less hours, we'll take the ones that prepare. Backups in the winter time and then use these newer, not newer, but lower hour machines on regular maintenance. We'll just see what happens, see how the money all pans out, still have the DOT program and budget to, to put through yet, to find out we're funding. Can't ignore me, I know we've got a budget put together, but we can shuffle things around if we need to, so. Sure, and project wise, we've got the, uh, the Weederwood North, uh, North Casino Project and. That's been submitted for, final plans were submitted, it's down now and, uh, getting ready for the, the, some Marjorie for letting the camera, which one we put in now. Get two projects in my head, uh, that'll be our paving project for next year, and still got some bridge stuff. Worked out, yeah, with the bridge project we've got. Is now over, I'll treat this, then awarded, so we don't schedule that again.
Who got that?
Some. Wasn't quite familiar with mid, uh, it. I can't even remember, it's, it, I can't remember the name, it's not, it's kind of a newer company to us anyway, that I've never had.
Very, are they around here somewhere?
Um, I don't even remember that one, it's been quite a while since we worked it. And then we've got some things, I, I just got back our, our final bridge inspection report. And. I've got a lot of work programmed, but not enough money to work on. Go on, and interestingly enough, I, uh, while we're down, I have a concrete pavement association, Waylon Brown was there the first night. He's the chair of the transportation committee, so he and I sat down and had some conversations about funding and, and things of that nature, so. I kind of made him aware of, you don't have money for anything for projects, but.
But that's where Tiff comes in, if you identify the project.
Exactly, exactly, so I mean, if we are able to, I mean, I've got. I think I kind of maybe gave you guys a heads up that, and what we had, or maybe I haven't done it yet, but you will know here. With paving projects forecasted, um, for the next five years. In our foreign market fund, we'll probably need, we have a shortfall in the foreign market fund for what we want to do in roadway servicing. We probably have shortfall of two million dollars that we need to come up with to do the projects, because our foreign market money can't take. Now, with bridge money, we're probably looking at another, at least two million dollar shortfall in the next five, well, that's, I haven't. Since we got our bridge report stuff back, now I'm trying to, to chew that, it might be two million dollars there too, so.
If we utilize tip, does that affect us on the road money too?
Right.
Right. footage of bridge. All this good stuff.
The, the roadway, I don't think the roadway.
I think the roadway does.
The highway stuff, it doesn't, because they don't evaluate a road and say, good, fair, or whatever, the bridge stuff kind of does. It's, I, our, our percentages are based on square footages of poor condition bridge decks.
How many more poor bridges can we get to shoot?
Um, we didn't see a whole lot of.
Staying about even.
Yeah, well, right, I mean, I didn't have anything that they said, jump out, I said, we gotta get this replaced right away, but. You know, you've got, they give you this window of, replace this bridge in four to ten years, well, you don't know what's gonna happen between four to ten years. And with the money I've got, I'm gonna try to program it out ten years, problem is my program doesn't go out ten years to be a programmer, so. What I do is program it in the next five, and I'll just keep kicking the can down the road until we can maximize it, or they say, huh. You pushed it down long enough, now you gotta do something, because with the funding we have, we almost have to be more reactive than proactive, because we just don't have it. And so, the only other option we have is, that I can see, and so.
That's probably the situation they were in the last time they used to.
And I'm, yes. Which went in two thousand nine and two thousand ten, the county used to pave roads. Every other county in the state that didn't have wind towers was turning roads, were turning roads back to gravel, and.
That can be a two process either way.
Well, I mean, to go in and rip up our road, I guess.
Depends on what they are.
Yeah, I mean, to rip up, a lot of these people were using, they had probably old seal coat roads, they couldn't maintain anymore, so they wanted. Go in with a ripper and rip it up and grade it, I don't know the, it'd be easy to turn in, you know, it'd be a process to turn it. An existing asphalt or concrete road into a gravel road, but. Once you've got that done, now you're just maintaining it with gravel, the, 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 the problem is, is these, these hard service roads now have a lot of traffic on them and. And, and I'll tell you, there are counties out there in the state of Iowa that. A hundred vehicles a day, two hundred, three hundred vehicles a day is still a gravel road to them, we've got roads that are having a hundred and fifty vehicles a day on their hard surface. We're fortunate to have the hard service here, but it also costs a lot of money to maintain them. And maybe not specifically maintain them in today's dollars, but maintenance as in, when that road comes up to need something done to be resurfaced or redone. That's when the costs kick in, you know, year by year, we're not sticking a lot of money into the surface. Uh, other than snow plows, paint and, and shoulders, but when it comes time to replace it, you gotta add that in the lifecycle cost. And add that into your yearly cost, because sooner or later, you gotta replace that road, and that's where the costs kick in, so. You can spend, you know, and, and I haven't done the numbers in quite a while, but even if you say two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollar year. Per mile per year of hard service road, where gravel road is similar, maybe a little bit more, because depending on how much rock and the quality of rock and the cost. You still have that, those are regular maintenance costs, but you need to have to add the cost of what that road cost to build into that lifecycle cost. And that's where it gets expensive, so. Tiff is probably the only arm that we have left for maintaining what we have. Unless, you know, we've got this federal bill coming now, and they're saying twenty to thirty percent more money, but. We'll probably see an increase, but if you look at our bridge funding at a hundred and, I'm gonna throw the number out there, I know it's under twenty thousand dollars, I'm gonna say like. A hundred and sixty, because I can't remember exact dollars, it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, add twenty percent to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars or something. That still isn't enough to do one bridge a year.
It's a problem, it's money, but it's not enough.
Well, no, even two hundred thousand dollars doesn't buy us a bridge, I mean, bridges are two, three, four hundred, or three, four hundred thousand dollars depending on size. And if we can only accumulate three years worth and borrow ahead four and a half. We can do that, we can get rid of three bridges and sit here and wait another five, six years before we can do something else.
Meantime, two more.
In the meantime, things are else, other things are falling apart, and the biggest thing, you know, you look at that, I don't know if it ever was on the news, uh, on what. What the, Iowa has the most.
Yep.
Poorly rated deficient bridges in the nation, Iowa also has a one mile grid pattern of roads.
I was gonna say, we got more roads.
Anytime that stream crosses a road, you got a, a structure cross.
We get quite a few streams of work.
People wants the, well, and people wanna know, Wisconsin paves every road, they don't have gravel, they don't have a one mile grid pattern.
So they chip seal every road.
Well, and they do, but they don't have one mile grid patterns to get around either. When they close something, it's a long detour.
There's a small square mile in Wisconsin.
No, and, and if you look at a map of roads, you see southern Minnesota, northern Iowa, it's, it's, it's all compact, and the further away from that you get. The more spread out the roads get, and, and so there's less bridges, less, less roadway miles, but. Iowa, somebody was making a comment to me over the, when I was in, in wanting to, our level B roads, and how great, you can't tell a level B road from a level A, and they're like. You go anywhere else, and that level B is a dirt path, I said, well, we've. You probably should probably not stick as much money into our level B roads as we do, but. We get a lot of phone calls and complaints about it, and in the past, we've kind of always been. We've always had an open ear to try to, to solve people's problems, but sooner or later, it just gets to be to the point where, you know what? Is it worth keeping, keeping the money thrown out those roads, so, anyway. That's, those are things we're working on, and, and two, I still have to schedule a meeting with you and the board of Mitchell County yet, so. Does, do you guys know, just, I'll send out an email here probably this week, is it better to do like, uh. A Monday or a Tuesday afternoon, I mean, you guys meet Mondays, they meet Tuesdays, does it matter, a day of the week that wouldn't work?
Not like a new, new type of deal or whatever.
Okay. I mean, even if it wasn't a Monday or Tuesday, at any time, it'd probably be the best, I mean, I just figure, if we do it early in the week, that you guys are always kind of. But it's just, if you guys had meetings on the same day, then we'd know everybody was available on the same day, but.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever.
I'll send an email out, try to get a consensus of what might work for everybody.
I don't have any other questions, guys, just a question, Willwood South.
Yeah.
What's our schedule on something like that, road or fixing or filling them?
Well.
And dips?
Will probably.
Make it last longer.
Yeah, I, it's not in my five year plan yet, but the, the, the cracks wise, we'll probably try to do what we've been doing on. On three ninetieth and then Thrush, trying to fill with the Durapatcher, kind of fill them in. The other option is to get a contractor to come in, I think it's probably gonna be a little bit more money to do some sort of a, a leveler on it, but. Our guys can do it with the Durapatcher, if we can just get the time to do it. There's a lot of miles there to do, so.
There is.
Yeah, so.
That's funny.
Yeah, well, what happens is you get that initial thermal crack, and the moisture gets in there, and it's not sealed, and that road never got sealed. Because the moisture gets in there in traffic, you bring the water in there, and then traffic creates a vacuum, pulls fines out. And over time, it'll just pull material away, and then as traffic pushes down, and it just creates that, that divot in there. And even sometimes, in the winter time, if you got a fine crack, you can, you almost have a hump in the winter time, because the moisture gets in there and then freezes as well. Of course, and that cracks all the asphalt around there, and then you've got alligator cracking, and then just joint disperates.
Oh, it's in good shape, I was just curious, someone mentioned that again, it's like a.
Yeah, we'll see if we can kind of, I know we've been still trying to catch up, but maybe that we should probably, you know, we, we, we've got three ninetieth and Thrush, well. I think Thrush is the one that we've got for fiscal twenty-three using our STP dollars.
Good.
I don't think we can do three ninetieth next year, like we maybe wanted to, just because we don't have the money.
Right.
We'll go through our, maybe we can do an application, maybe use some SDP money on something like that, push it down the road a little ways, because they are trying to. Maintain it with the Durapatcher a little bit, but it's oxidizing too, and so.
It is.
But we're, you know, how long are we gonna try to chase it before we can get to it? Um, with the Durapatcher, they can do, the guys that we got, run the Durapatcher, they can do a pretty fabulous job, and making them kind of smooth. Sealed crack and get some rideability back in.
Yeah, so. Terrible, it's just.
It's annoying though, I mean, it's rough, it rattles sometimes.
And it gets, it's a pretty heavily used road, unfortunately, unfortunately, it's the bypass for the scales.
And, yeah, so, and, and thanks to you guys as a board. I'm known by the American Concrete Paving Association, the University of North Carolina is the guy that likes to try.
Okay.
I don't know my name very well, oh, you're the guy that likes to try, so. The local CP Tech Center, the paving associations have been talking about work in Mitchell County, and the things we're trying to do to advance the technologies. So, good for you guys, good for us.
Well.
Hopefully, I mean.
We do, we got some of the best roads in the state.
Well, the biggest thing, the biggest thing that we've told those people is. Nobody knows that the stuff works unless you try it, and, and we don't have big sections out there we're trying, but. They're at least keeping an eye on it and eyeballing it and seeing some things that can progress the technologies to make roads last longer.
And we just need to keep figuring out how to do that, because like I say, we definitely have driven a lot of roads in the states, and we, nobody compares, so. Gravel, everything, what will be used?
Yeah.
You're right, I've been in places where they're, they're roads.
Yeah, so. A lot of people wanna contact us.
Good.
Well, I keep telling you, we've got states like Florida that don't do hardly any concrete, we're trying, you know, the. Associates are trying to put, yeah, it's a product, you know, we can do the asphalt too, but, because I was down there for that, you know, they're just, how do you promote the stuff? Sometimes you just gotta. Write the bullet, try it, we've been pretty successful, I know we've had issues with some things, but we figured out what those issues are, and we won't do those, those designs again, so. Maybe, thank you guys for.
Alright.
For that.
Bring us ideas, that's good.
I'm gonna go to Minnesota in March, and we're gonna preach.
Okay, sounds good, alright, drainage. Some claims, I guess, don't we? Questions, I'll. Take a motion to approve the drainage. Most of the proof, drainage claims. Just a second, okay. And flames. Nothing else on the ranges, or?
Um, did you get your? Before that?
Um. Not officially, right, I mean. Haven't said yes, I guess, for sure.
Were they gonna talk to you or talk?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll see one tonight, or maybe both of them tonight.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just told them, but you know. Very interesting. I should say no.
Mm-hmm.
Look for somebody else, so. Other than that, uh, you got any hearing days for some of these districts coming up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, claims. Any questions on claims? Nope, take a motion to approve the claims, and.
I'll make a motion to approve the claim.
Move in second, it's always fair.
I.
Okay. Share support. Sure, second, I'll second it, okay. Moving second, it was fair, say hi. Motion carries. April.
One.
None today, liquor. Thirsty dog, well, just take a motion to approve liquor license, thirsty dog.
I'll make that a motion.
I will second.
Alright, all those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Motion, okay. Got the Joyce agreement today?
Not today.
Okay.
That's great, girl.
We're not doing precinct fund today yet?
Nope.
Okay. Resolution.
Or no, not that one either, oh, wait, we are doing the agreement with.
We're doing the green.
Not the resolution.
Okay, sorry, green, we've been working on the city of Mark.
We have to do that, because they're over two thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, say, they're still, it's just right there, cats, dogs, and.
Cause last time they were under, the last time we had to do this agreement was in twenty. Oh, one.
As you say, I don't remember doing that, so.
Nope.
Alright, I will take a motion to approve the agreement between Worth County and the city of Northwood, or the precinct combination.
I will motion to approve that agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? No, it's a fair say, hi.
Hi.
Motion carries.
That's just dealing with the incorporated areas and unincorporated areas, they are gonna work together.
That's why you're in charge of the motions. Okay, any appointments from anybody here on these boards? It's me, right? You got Merlin for this? Alright, well, there you go.
Don't have to point him to.
Mark, yeah, we got a point for the public health.
Yep.
Yep.
I thought we done that.
Yeah, and I forgot.
We did was Diane.
Diane, we did Diane, but.
I just bumped you and didn't even think about it, and your name should have been in the list too, so Jessica caught me.
Yep, so we wanna do these one at a time?
No.
I'll take a motion to approve the Boyd, Port, Borden appointments for public health and for Nyakog.
Motion to approve those.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, for the discussion. Motion. I don't need a sign, Mr.
Oh, no. Um, I just didn't know.
Yeah.
Um.
We skipped fifteen.
Do it. Oh, yes. Okay.
Yeah.
Proposed election equipment first.
Okay. Um, since our equipment is old, and it scares me, I, and the new equipment is finally out. Um, I had already, um. Bumped up from the OVIs for, um, the ADI, ADA compliance machines. I bumped up to the FETs two or three years ago, it's probably been at least three years ago now.
I was on board.
Yeah, and then the mini scanner, which has been slick, a lot better than shoving each ballot through, well, I guess they still go through, they just go through a lot faster. So then, um, yeah, now I have a bid on eight, since we don't need a ninth one, because we don't have to shove the absentees through it. For eight of the new, whatever they call the OVOs now, and it's forty, forty-one thousand dollars from the same company that would gotten everything else. And, um, they'll do a three-year deal with us, and it will be, um. We can start it in fiscal year, um, twenty-three, so, so I can still use my capital for the web.
What about the ten thousand dollar?
No, they won't let us use it.
Yeah, and that's.
I asked again, and, yeah, it's forty-one, one sixty-four, yep, can't use it, if, if we've actually had them before, you can't use it to replace, even if they're ancient.
It's all the money.
Uh-huh, so that's where I've struggled to try to spend that money, it's so frustrating.
Isn't, so they to be proactive.
So that ten thousand dollar technology hub of money is not usable for?
I emailed directly to Heidi, and she said no, so that's the second time I've been turned.
Alright.
So, well, one thing I'm probably gonna do is order a fireproof cabinet to put the ballots in. Voted ballots, other people have, I'll ask, and see if the third time's a charm or not, but they only wanna give you the ten thousand and one shot. So, I might only get two or three thousand of it.
Well, I'd say.
Well, I mean, you'd ask ahead.
That charging, uh.
That, well, I don't know how that's. That's coming through home loan security, so I don't know if that's like a grant through them, or if we're paying for it, or I, I have no idea what that is yet.
Okay.
They were just asking about it.
We'd use that for.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if they have another pot of money that they're, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, they just ask questions, and I'm like, yeah, sure, I'll take one, so, I don't know.
Why can't you use ARP money for these election machines?
I, I just wanna use my.
You could, but.
I mean, if you're looking for a source, yeah.
You have.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll fit, if it's in my budget, I'm, I'm not worried about it.
Just kind of like a three-year, like, leased-up program, I mean, these are machines, obviously, we're up, we own them, and.
Yeah, yeah, they take.
Three years.
You don't have to mess with them, and.
So you get three years of service or warranty or support.
Well, yeah, you still, you have to pay for that too.
Well, I'm sure.
That is, and I'd have to look back what I pay now, but it's about five thousand dollars for annual software and firmware licensing, same for everything, and then. Thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty for annual hardware maintenance fees, which Mark comes every year and maintains our machines and everything, so. And anything that is broke, they take care of it, yeah, they, they're very good to work with.
I'd still say for the best. A lot of the counties are going that direction.
You would actually vote on a, I've had that.
No, it's for the poll book, poll book, a lot of the counties are going to, there's a, what's the company?
Tenx.
Tenx.
Which that's through them too, I, I don't wanna jump to that.
I know.
For ten grand.
Well, if we already have a pool book, I don't know if it would.
That's what the other county.
Well, some didn't have pool books to start with.
And it was, we're ahead of everybody. Well, the tenx is pretty slick. Well, it's budgeted, and you'd upgrade, it's time, it's just like secondary roads, sheriff's office, timed up, raised, timed up, great.
You, you're watching pretty close.
I don't mind, the ones that are lighter than the other. I don't know that you need a motion.
No.
I'll have to ask Elizabeth, because I know that since it's technically dead, since I'm stretching it out through years, I need to, but I'll, I'll ask Elizabeth.
As long as it's budgeted and the budget balances, so we don't have to start cutting things other places.
We have a discussion. Okay, it's fifteen, seventeen, seventeen is, uh.
Heidi.
Heidi here right now?
Yep.
Heidi, come on in.
Runner in the hot seat.
Chair.
Hello. Heidi, Allison. Hi, and I work at Nyakog, and I'm here today to kind of discuss the State Housing Trust Fund and the status of. Your county, and we would like, I guess, approval for Nyakog's Housing Trust Fund to take over the administration of Worth County.
Okay, isn't that what we were just talking about to the tail?
And we talked about it last Monday too.
Yeah, there, Winnebago was talking about it.
Yeah, because, um, you know, with Homeward opting out of it, it kind of leaves you kind of in the lurch, um, the state, I, but they don't really like standalone counties.
Okay.
I know Floyd County was a standalone for a few years, and they merged with Sarah Gordon, and, um. Actually, we're, we're kind of excited at the op, to have the opportunity, because we do operate a larger home repair program. Through Federal Home Loan Bank, and the minimum project size for them is fifteen thousand. So, we do fifteen to twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars worth of repairs on, on KLMI homes. And, um, we also have emergency funds, very limited emergency funds through United Way, where we can go up to a couple, two, three thousand dollars in repairs.
Correct.
So that kind of leaves the six counties, um, in our region, that Homeward is administering the State Housing Trust Fund, where. We have a gap in financing, so we have to refer those families to somewhere else. So, you know, if we were able to administer the State Housing Trust Fund for our whole region. Then, you know, we would have more resources to offer the, the counties and the other, the residents in the other counties.
Correct. I don't see any reason not to.
You know, um, we.
You gotta do something.
We would eventually, you know, request some funding, but about two thousand dollars, I think, um, Sarah Gordon County is giving us five thousand. I didn't think it was right to ask the smaller counties to contribute as much, we, we do have a match that we have to meet. For local and government. Funding, but I know we've missed the deadline for this year's, but we get funded on calendar year, and you guys would do fiscal July first, I'm sure. So.
What do we pay now?
Five.
Five thousand, right?
So I'll be able to plug the two in for this coming year, and I didn't, I wasn't sure, cause Homeward is still gonna exist, but they're just changing directions, I think they're wanting to do more development and less home repair.
Good.
So I didn't know if they were still requesting funding.
No.
You said.
They.
Yeah, I said that they're not requesting funding, okay, they're gonna maintain a couple of the things that they've done in the past, but what you're talking about, no, they want out of it.
Yeah.
You gotta do something before December thirty-first of this year.
Good.
They just suggested a still budget for it, yeah, because you'd end up doing something.
Good.
And I will finance authority, they wanted an answer by June first, so I've been kind of, I, I had to meet with our board at the Housing Trust Fund, and kind of get approval from them. Cause I didn't wanna approach the counties until I did get that approval, and they did approve that in December, so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, so this kind of an action, and we're saying, we're gonna join, is that?
I would think so.
Okay. Right, so, any other questions right now?
No, there's only two options. Either those, either those counties.
Stand alone.
Either those counties that were there in the past formed their own.
Yeah.
Or we go with Sarah Gordon Floyd, with Nyakog.
Is there an agreement that'll have to be signed or anything?
I can find out, who can, from, um, Terry at the Iowa Finance Authority, but this is kind of new for me too, I've only been with Nyakog for a year or so.
Okay.
Well, I'd say if there, if there is, if not, we already got agreements with Nyakog on certain things anyways, so, should be, I would think fairly simple if, if there is such a, a name for a process of this kind of.
Yeah, maybe I'll. Yeah, maybe I'll I'll email. I'm gonna get back to the office and find out. I'm gonna let you know.
So I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to go with Nyacog.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? There you know, I was in first, yeah. Motion will carry. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for taking that over and hope everything works out.
Not a problem. I said, we're we're excited about having that opportunity, so.
Good. All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. John's not on yet, so John, Peter John is on, Melissa. Morning.
Morning, how are you?
Good, you?
Um, the legislative forums are on Saturday. It'll be in Joyce, uh, and then I have Winnebago counties on Friday. And um the brochures have been getting distributed, so if you know of anybody that wants brochures, just let me know. We're going, or Kaylee's going around um to all the different communities, stopping by city halls for sure, chambers and libraries. So that's about all I have for you today.
Sounds good. You guys got any questions?
I will get back to you most on the R L F email as soon as I'm done here.
Okay, we do have four already.
Okay, I'm still gonna participate, so I'm sending you one anyways.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, uh, Chris is not on today. I guess we'll go to department and we'll get some time.
Um, I won't be here tomorrow. We have our yearly cheese and chair's meeting down at Nyack. Um, to go with the task force and that also Nyack's gonna be presenting some new training opportunities through them for law enforcement, so I won't be here tomorrow, otherwise status quo. Cool. A couple of things, uh, cybersecurity training is kicking off this week. Everybody should be getting an email.
Sure did happen last week, took a bunch of crap last.
Well, fishing stuff, you got crap, right? The fishing stuff continues on and on. This is the actual training and we do uh when we fill out our cybersecurity insurance applications. We do state that we are offering training. Uh, so I would encourage everybody to get that done. I picked some really good ones this year.
You say we got, I've been waiting for that.
Yeah, yeah, I I.
Waiting by your computer.
Absolutely.
Danger zones on the on menu again, just because Jackie loves it so much.
Never listen to that song again.
Thanks. Um, fraud guard, oh, what's the board know? So fraud guard, I know uh Teresa. Court's office can talk about that. I think we're gonna actually have a meeting in a demo with them Wednesday. I think we're looking at one o'clock.
This one's.
Yeah, so if you guys wanna be involved in that, we can certainly set up a portion or, you know, some sort of webex and share it with you guys. And the fraud guard is is a way for citizens to sign up. Uh, and then they would be alerted if something happens to the property. I think that's primarily what that product.
So I mean, I know I can be here.
Yeah. I'll I'll throw the calendar in by now, once we get that finalized. I'll just send it out to all the. And then just to let you guys know, there's some legislation out there that affects cyber. Uh, there's a bill that's going through, and I think it's still going pretty strong. It looks like it's probably gonna cross the finish line. Um, that, so it the it's legislation that um says that cyber and technology is now a a purpose of counties. Um, and that you can use it just like you would for infrastructure, so you can you can uh fund it just like you would on roads or highways or bridges or anything like that. So um that allows counties that have been struggling um with the cyber stuff to to hopefully get some. Be able to use those those revenue streams to help themselves out.
I'm giving I can do it very well.
Possibly, possibly. I know there's a couple more counties that I hopefully will be helping them hire here pretty soon, so. Um, I think that's it for me. Um, uh, that you said email on the. Email you sent out on the e- new email stuff, phone system, all that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm out that day or not available at that time.
And I know the sheriff of the conflict, too, so I might just.
Yeah, I I'll figure out whatever you do.
Okay.
I don't use these phones, I'm not worried about it, the email. I'll screw that up, so I'll just figure out. He puts the buttons till I get to her. The the new phone system, we're possibly gonna pay for that with uh public health grant money, but that uh kind of went the way of the others office where it's only for public health, you know. So um but Jess was able, I think, to come up with with enough stuff. So uh to cover that grant, so but I I still plan on going board the phone system. Uh, the new dot go email system, um, I know law enforcement is not on board. Um, but I did wanna talk to everybody about why it makes sense and why we should go ahead and do it.
Change is never easy.
No, no, it is not, but I mean, it's i- anymore for us to do anything, uh, that goes almost required or it's going to be, you know, formally requested of of uh government entities here fairly soon. Um, and then the other things we can certainly, you know, discuss and sit down and prioritize and see what we wanna do for. Cause but the Gmail, Gmail's been great for us. It's been a, I I have had, you know, there are some advantages to having Gmail over the Office three sixty five. But Gmail just has gotten away from the government space and they're not, they're not supporting this. Where Office three sixty five, they have government cloud, they have government products and they price it, you know, for for government stuff.
Okay. Mark, you got something?
Yeah, yeah, good morning. Couple of things here. Uh, first of all, next Monday morning, uh, we have our safety committee meeting. So look for an agenda come out later this week on that. And then last week, the governor signed the request they sent up to the uh federal level. For a presidential declaration for twenty five counties from the December fifteenth storm. Um, Worth County is one of the twenty five. We met the threshold uh level on it, you know. Based on uh population, four dollars and forty seven cents per capita of damages. So if that is approved or when it is approved, they did, they didn't have any timeline on it. They don't expect it to be a rapid thing, because even some of the other areas where there was a lot more damage, uh, some of the other states. It's been slow going, but uh that will be forthcoming and um I know. Some of the departments had a little bit of a painful process coming up with the documentation just for the initial. Um, if they actually file for some federal funding reimbursements, that process will be even more painful. But it will mean money coming back into Worth County, so uh stay tuned for that. I guess that's all I have.
Anybody else? Supervisors weekly. Last week.
Well, we all have the. Assessors conference board on Monday. And she went through the Vanguard stuff and the revaluation and the handbook and the vehicles and all that stuff. All the budget. And then I, we have W W H W County Social Services, and I guess the biggest thing there. Other than the pay services that we updated was the fact that Sandy's gonna retire and we need to come up with a.
Trying, yeah, we're not letting her off. Find a replacement.
Yeah, they gave the dates of twenty five and twenty six someplace. She didn't think much of those. But anyway, we gotta come up with somebody.
She's working on like a job description.
Job description and a and a and a salary package, because we're not gonna come in at what we were, so. But uh that was the biggest deal there. We gotta figure out down the road. That's all I have.
With that, what um? Is that something that our mental health region?
Could handle.
Could handle? If if it meant, if it meant an employee, wouldn't it be better for an employee? Take over that portion and then more, you know, I mean, for the for Winnebago, it would eliminate Hancock, because they're a different region than we are.
That'd be something to ask Sandy maybe, because I don't know if they do different things or.
Right.
Uh, no, I don't.
And then didn't.
Well, and I'm so I'm not, that's why I'm wanting, when you say that, I mean, to me, they do kind of go hand in hand, right? Something we could work through there. It's still gonna call us. That's not.
Didn't Sandy kind of do two jobs?
Yeah.
Generally, I stopped because plus the mental app.
Right.
Because W H W was, that was the region, that was our.
That wasn't.
Broke off. Region before the state implemented regions. So I mean, I'm just wondering if if her services can be consumed by our mental health region, you know.
And what gaps are there?
Basically kept.
Yeah, well, that's, I'm just trying to figure what basically I found the difference between what she does and what.
Right, I think we definitely need to look.
Well, Sandy does substance abuse where they do mental. Sandy also does, like, if we have someone that has no family members and for funeral expenses and stuff like that.
She hunts the money down, if there is any.
But it's not saying a person couldn't work the social service and do the same thing as an employee. I'm just saying.
I don't know. Everything I've always got from Anna, that is all the mental side.
Oh, I get it, I get it, but yeah.
I don't know.
I'd get a talk to that with them, probably.
Yeah, well, because I mean. That's part of the services we're offered, too. So I mean, if that's. Because, you know, with Winnebago.
Well, we have a W H W agreement.
Right.
Share it with.
Yeah.
And see what what needs, what gaps need to be covered.
Cause the only one that would lose anything, which if Hancock would do the same thing, talk with their region, would be Hancock, this was in separate regions. But with Winnebago and the Sioux, we're all in the same region, so if it meant adding workload or adding an employee to assist eastern counties of that region.
Yeah.
You know, it'd be better that way.
And maybe they wouldn't continue on.
Right.
So you're gonna have to figure it out.
Because that's funded out of tax dollars for the state's fund, and maybe fund on the rest here after this year.
We should be able to figure it out. It's, I mean, I'm not saying that we still wouldn't have W H W, but you know, it's.
Right.
I mean, it's.
So, okay, I'll talk with that.
To say, I mean, saying is when work on like job descriptions and stuff.
You know.
Position, too, so.
And and decide what percentage of her job went to two different areas.
Two different areas.
How much she spent, how much, how much time she spent in each area.
Okay, that's just my question on that, but uh, no, alls I had was uh the compensation board meeting. Um, I didn't, I made the W H W meeting, but it uh, yeah. Conversation board went good. Budget was approved, I think, with a few minor changes and that's going out for public hearings, so. Uh, other than that, that was all I had.
Same thing, we still, so pretty well covered, so. That's all, yeah. Um, so we are just waiting for John Downs, right?
So you know. The only other thing exactly shooter training is I've gotten, I've got nine openings in each session still, if anybody wants to sign.
I got something.
Wednesday.
I'll email you and let you know I'm switching to morning session. Yeah, that's fine. That's why.
Did you get an email in the next W H W meeting?
Not yet.
June sixth at one P M. At Hancock.
You ever gone?
I haven't, of course, but I haven't been around very long.
None for long.
So.
I'll take that back to you.
Fancy the afternoon. Okay, we're uh I sat for meeting that day.
Nine to eleven and one to three.
Let me see what, yeah, obviously what I got. Oh, I do have an I S A C board meeting Wednesday. Uh, if you guys have anything you want to bring to, need to bring up, I know Mark has got comments that had something for me to bring. But we're doing budgets, so.
Okay.
Oh, and on Thursday is also. Nice. Hopefully. We just got lunch with our legislature, maybe.
Oh, maybe.
You guys are going on Thursday?
Yeah, statewide.
That's right, we're that being, is that the embassy? Oh, shoot, I'll be down. I've got a meeting with the the state. So in the secretary state office. If you run by what happened, you see somebody that looks.
I gladly skip legislation to dinner.
On the tip of my tongue.
You gotta be on market, if you can find you there. It's gonna be the one in the back corner.
I know exactly where that place is at, so.
Lot of stuff is in that block. It's a good block.
A couple of blocks, yeah.
Yeah, cupcakes and then breakfast and then.
Oh, no, none of the cupcakes.
Only cupcakes are really good, yeah. Whole, the speakeasy downstairs is.
And I told you soil and water.
Yeah.
That your meetings the same.
I did send her a message, too.
To be on the.
Oh.
It just doesn't really apply.
No, it doesn't.
We went to.
Most were not there. Even then, we're not discussing.
She sends out a mail, we'll get up to date.
But.
All she needs to do.
Yeah, I don't mind sitting on a conference.
No, I thought the last one was.
Kind of this me two different ways, so.
Maybe we wanna reach out to John.
Yeah, we call it or see. Oh, I bet you he doesn't have the link.
This uh.
District Association, that.
Oh, I need to know what you've got.
John, that one, too.
He just comes up and talks to us over here.
They got some new rules, they just got emails on.
He's not. Ten forty five.
Got an email from uh. Well, the all the engineers did on their um proposal to change the. Barments for bidding more thresholds and stuff.
Oh, we're gonna open again, well.
Came from uh.
Don Etler.
John at Don Etler. Did you guys get that done?
Am I not afforded, I haven't afforded the last one, I don't think.
Don Etler's still messing around.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's.
And he's something with Senator Booth.
Oh, he's glorious now.
But they wanna change the um thresholds. By more by like size of the district, so it makes a little more sense.
Well, yeah, you gotta.
Cause like there's little districts that if you spent five hundred thousand dollars, it would really affect them, but like out in Deer Creek.
Many, yes, million dollars. Point, but it's, I get what you're saying, yeah.
So they're trying to tweak.
Hundred thousand dollar repair would not be uncommon in a district like.
Well, and I was just reading some of that was if, and if I, if I understood it correctly, that some of these small ones, if you've got under seventy five thousand dollars. In in an improvement or a maintenance thing, that it's a lump sum thing, you know, you pay a lump sum fee, you don't. But if I understand it right, it's not a bid item thing where you pay lump sum when it's complete and that's it. There's some changes that they probably need to look at, that they're trying to pass, I think.
Okay. So it's nothing. Goals is Jane is something, right?
Um.
But they did, yeah, when they had a, I don't have that book here, but they had a whole list of stuff that was on I D B, I D B A's proposal. Grant or causes for this year, but Jane hasn't said anything that they're acting on right now.
It's S F.
Is there on some drainage? I didn't see anything on drains, I guess.
Their amendments to chapter four sixty eight drainage laws.
Okay.
Yeah, proposing, I guess. It's from Senator.
Booth.
Okay.
More important, I was at a restaurant in Beverly Joel.
Yeah, how was that?
Thirsty Fox was fantastic.
Set up by the old Hardee's.
Uh, yeah, yeah, it was an old bakery.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's the restaurant now for a couple of years.
Right there in the corner, that bakery.
Yeah, that was that bakery that used to be there. Just just on the other side of Hardee's there and.
Pretty good.
Great old fashioned. I I saw it, an old fashioned that long. Great old fashioned. I I saw an old fashioned that that long time and the food was, you know, it's bar food, but they've got, you know, good burgers and.
On tap stuff.
A lot of tap stuff, a lot of different tap stuff.
Good opened up, but I think.
You're talking about on TV with eateries and diners.
Diners, diners and guys.
There you go.
I've got days for radio, not for TV, so that that's stopping my career right there, so. Yeah, we've been wanting to try it, but finally got up there and it little small. I mean, you know, seeing you want to call, they've got a reservation system, so you want to call.
You turned that one down the road to the north and on the west side of the street at Barnes.
To the the one twelve.
Downtown, you mean?
No, just up the street from this one, about a block and a half and on the left.
Ooh, is Elbow, no, not the elbow room.
No, that's back to that.
Yeah, so. I think I've hit on that.
It's all this one?
They used to be. Yeah, when they opened.
That must be a newer one, ain't it? Wouldn't be too far from the liquor depot either.
No.
Trying to think what's there. Oh, there's a little cafe right there.
Hello, what is it?
Yeah, some pink lady, no.
Oh, that's up by the, that's farther up. Yeah, that's the old train depot.
Okay.
Up there. So, south of Domino's or north of Domino's?
Uh, this would be south of Domino's.
Although you got me thinking.
I drive by there. I don't see a lot of stuff on, I don't get popped out really that much, but.
Oh, we used to go all the time, but. Now it's south. Cause there's a new coffee shop where the Dairy Queen used to be. Coffee and mini, coffee and mini go nuts.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah.
Instead of ice.
Bleachers, sports bar. I've not been.
Oh, that's, really? That's gotta be thoroughly new, yeah. I don't know.
Where do you? Was that the old office too? Cause the office shoe was there.
Somebody's got something up on Joel.
Yep, bleacher sports bar and grill.
Slip and Joel.
I know.
Sounds alright.
It's like, yeah, it's something that's set up while we don't, you've been to the elbow room lately after the new ownership.
Yeah.
They got a fantastic looking menu too, if all.
Where's that at?
It's a.
Right.
Down a little south and a little bit west, east of Hardee's.
Yeah.
It's just an old cafe.
Oh, that's, yeah.
That's a hole in the wall.
Yeah, well, there's a hole in the wall there somewhere too. Where's that at?
That's already, that's.
That's up at the.
That's on.
Hardee's is sitting right on the corner where you take.
Right on. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, it's a, it's before you come to Hardee's if you're coming from the east. It used to be, oh, it's been twenty five years since I've.
Been around there a long time.
Yeah.
But it just changed ownership here. Right before the pandemic, I think.
Time to get into the restaurants in here.
Packing plant restaurant.
Or the old guy. Yep, you know, grab the breakfast and tell. Probably work. Always wanted to be a snatching. Uh, thirsty fox or.
Right.
Uh, one's full of Broadway, what uh?
On five, five, five twelve on Broadway or our main or how is that? One twelve on Broadway, there you go. Yeah, there you go. It's a nice little.
Yeah.
It's right up on Main Street, uh.
One twelve on Broadway.
Yeah.
Just past uh, Prescendos.
What are you guys at John's time? Cause he was, had to be off by ten, right?
Right.
I haven't seen him come in. The system. That's the, I think that's the old depot um, on the train track there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, old grease, that's kind of grease has been there forever.
That's it, it's been there. Yeah, just on the other side of where the hay. Olson's Manufacturing was.
Sure.
I thought it was just north of Olson's Manufacturing, Olson's Manufacturing set right on the corner by the railroad track.
Probably.
It would make a bail hook.
Oh, really? I used them, never.
Yeah, well, that's where they came from.
I did not know that.
They designed and built those.
Really? They had a net for a while.
I used them, never knew where they're made. Well, the, yeah, good, good information during the meeting that people could.
Yeah, we're helping out the. Just make sure you want to notice.
Send them across state line.
Oh, there's plenty to come down from state line.
They all go to the casino.
Casino. Signature.
Now they're closed, they're closed right now.
March, getting slayed sometime.
I don't think those things are ever seen like they.
Oh, yeah, he was sure. Does he wish her? I think, I think I've seen him run the restaurant.
It's just going more downhill.
Yeah. Who's the newsroom? I have no idea.
Hey, John, this is Jackie Big House. I have a feeling we're losing Tom with time with you. I sent you the link to the Zoom, but I, it was late, I'm sorry.
For. Yeah, Zach was on earlier.
Oh, shoot, okay. Okay, awesome, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay. Bye. Thought it was still mine thirty.
Uh huh.
Oh, oh.
But, yeah.
I emailed him totally ago, nine fifteen, so I guess I should be at enough time.
Well, we gotta wait for.
Don't over.
Was he coming here personally or?
Oh, okay.
There's a big cast.
I think he tries to hit. Different, yeah. So that doesn't always work out.
Monday meetings, I'm sure we're done.
There he is.
Good.
Good morning.
Morning, John.
Yeah. She took some of the.
Taking her papers up.
Yeah.
She gets back.
Cleaning the stuff so that they can get working on those, I suppose.
Yep.
So we're definitely going to the new email. Cause of the federal government supporting that one better.
Well, I mean, everybody, the the dot gov is a better government email extension, you know, we're not a word right now, but a lot of places are wanting to see that.
Very rich and good.
Oh, thanks.
Nope.
She had those down already.
And Dan doesn't wear a new business card as well.
I've seen him, replied to it.
Yeah.
Are we ready to roll?
Yeah, we're ready to roll.
Alright, John. Amendment to urban role plan. So what are we looking at?
You muted, John.
It isn't, there it is.
Well. Need to. Update that urban renewal plan, is that the? Idea?
Yes.
So. Um, you know, that, that's going to be a two-step process. Uh, you're not starting it today. Um, you'd need to start it at a subsequent board meeting, setting a date for a public hearing. And approving notices, et cetera. Um, after that first step. You would then enter into what I refer to as kind of a notice and consultation period. During which you you need to get a notice published in the paper. There's a consultation session that needs to be held with the. Um, affected school district. As we've talked about before, and I I don't remember geographically, but if you're going within two miles of any city limits. Um, you know, the the those municipalities would need to provide their consent. Um, in addition, if there's any property that meets the statutory definition of agricultural land. We'll need to make sure we get the appropriate property owner permission. Um, you know, no later than the the end of that notice and consultation period. Um. On- once that's all. Uh, been. Attended to um, at the appointed daytime and place, the board would then hold a public hearing. This is typically about four weeks after that initial action. Um, once the public hearing has been held and the board has taken any public input. Then a resolution can be adopted approving the amendment to the plan. And to the extent that we are adding taxable parcels. That you want in the future to get TIF off of, which I I think you will be. You would then conclude the process with the adoption of a TIF ordinance. Which just goes on file in Jackie's office and mechanically sets the taxable parcels up so they can produce TIF in the future. As always, with your ordinances, that can be done in one, two or three considerations. Depending on the appetite at the board for waiving considerations. So the the whole process can be completed in as little as a four-week kind of official time span. If you're waiving considerations on the, on the ordinance, otherwise, of course, it's going to stretch out for a couple of more meetings. After that, so maybe you'd be looking at six or eight weeks for outside completion. So that's the process that you have ahead of you. In order to begin that process and certainly at my end, to be able to help you document and navigate that process. The things that we absolutely will need to know are number one, geography. What ground, if any, are we adding to the urban renewal area? Um, and making sure that you're working with Jackie and maybe your assessor if need be. To make sure that you've got adequate real property descriptions for us to plug into your materials. So we need to know what ground you are adding. Ground that gets added to urban renewal areas. To my mind, always, or almost always, falls into two categories. Number one. Real estate that you need in there because you want to be able to spend TIF dollars. Supporting some kind of activity on that ground. So for example, you're needing to extend a road or a pipeline or any other type of, you know, infrastructure. Well, we need to make sure that the ground where that project is going to be situated. Is included in the urban renewal area. Why? Because we're only allowed to use TIF on projects that are situated geographically. In the urban renewal area. Similarly, it might not be an infrastructure project. Maybe there's a business that's expanding. Or, you know, a manufacturing plant that's going to get built out. And you want to provide some TIF incentive to that private development. We would need to make sure that the parcel or parcels where the private development will happen. Are included in the urban renewal area. So the first real estate you got to worry about. Is the location of projects where you want to spend or provide TIF support. The second category are your TIF producers, right? Where will the TIF come from? Are there taxable parcels that aren't already in your urban renewal and TIF regime? That in the future, you will look to as, you know, growth factors. To provide TIF revenue for you or for your projects more specifically. And so any such taxable parcels are the other kind of real estate we worry over. Um, a- and sometimes they're one in the same, like if you have private development, like I mentioned before. That you're intending to support with some TIF, that may also be a TIF producer. So you would want to pick up both of them. You might have a neighboring parcel that you don't think you're going to spend any TIF on. But you think because of all of this activity, that one's going to develop as well. You might want to include that as a potential TIF producer, right? Your public right of way and those kinds of things, they're never going to produce TIF for you. Right? It's not taxable property, but so.
If the project's there, we have to have it.
If the project's there, you've got to have it, right? So those, those are the two categories of real estate that you must include. Any parcel that you're gonna, or not necessarily a parcel, any ground that you're going to wind up providing TIF support to. And any parcels that you are intending to be able to to collect TIF from in the future. All right, so a- as you're organizing your thoughts on that, you, we want to make sure we're being um, inclusive. So real estate is one thing, and we rely very heavily on you folks to provide us with those property descriptions. To plug into the legislation and materials. I don't have the bandwidth to be, you don't want to be relying on me to check the. The veracity of legal descriptions that we we we're all going to have a problem, so. Um, the other thing I want you to be focused on then are projects. The urban renewal law requires that when we adopt new plans or amend old plans. If you're going to use TIF for something. We need to be declaring that as an authorized urban renewal project. In the urban renewal plan. And we we'll draw up the narrative description for you and make sure that we're being legally sufficient. But we need you to supply us with, you know, the identification of each distinct project. A little bit of a thumbnail sketch about what we think it's going to i- involve. And importantly, a TIF allowance for each such project, or to put another way. A maximum amount of TIF that we will be allowed to claim over time to support the project. And that one can be tricky. Um, we we, you don't always know right now how much valuation is going to be driven. Or what a project is going to cost. And so typically. You you want to give yourself some cushion. Don't, don't draw those margins too skinny. I don't be silly with it, I don't think, but um, you you know, gi- give a little bit of cushion for for the unknowns. Um, so just by way of example, let's say you had one infrastructure project, a pipeline. Um, and and one private development project. Um, you know, some, a company that's going to expand. And you're going to do some TIF incentive for the company. And you want TIF to also be going towards the infrastructure development. Well. We would set that out in your plan amendment as two distinct projects. The company TIF incentive project and the pipeline infrastructure project. We'd give a little bit of a narrative description about what's intended with each of those projects, who, what, when, where, why, and how much. Um, and away we go. So. In order for us to help you kick off this process. We need to have at a minimum that information that I just described, geography. And itemized project descriptions. I'll stop there.
John.
Yeah.
This might be a question for.
John, this might be a question for a finance person, but with the current legislation. Are you concerned about payment stream for projects and stuff? Is it something we should be doing right now, not knowing if, what's going to happen with that?
Well, I'm a lawyer, so I worry by trade, right? It's what I do. And so, yeah, I'm very, very concerned. But I don't say that from any kind of an educated perspective about your cash flows. Or, or the demands on those cash flows because as you noted, Jack, I, I, I'm not a financial analyst. I don't know your books. But for, on behalf of every county client that I have that has been relying on this tool. I'm exceedingly concerned about the legislation. That, that's being proposed right now. It, in, in particular. Like it's one thing if it's gonna. You know, cut us off at the knees for future projects that we haven't approved yet. But looking back in the rearview mirror, there's a lot of clients that have a lot of, you know, debt outstanding. And there's no accommodation in the current version of that bill to, to let people take care of business that they've already. That they've already entered into and that, that's probably my biggest concern about the, the legislation that obviously may. You have to look at it before you bite off anything else. That, that's the, that's. I can't speak, I don't think any more specifically than that because I just don't know the numbers. But you need to make sure before you make any additional commitments with wind farm generated TIF. That you know, first of all, everything that's in the rearview mirror, you know how that's going to be taken care of. Even if this bill goes through. And then if you're satisfied, you know, look ahead at what else you want to do. And weigh, you know, weigh the pros and cons. If we have this tool, great. What if we don't? Can we, can we still bite off what we're wanting to do?
The TIF is not going to go away, I don't think. What it is, if I'm reading it right, you're the lawyer, but. Basically the schools and all the other entities who get their money, we would still have about forty percent left to use for TIF. I mean, basically it's just like property tax coming in at that point. And we could still probably utilize that for debt service and things like that, I would hope. I, I agree with you. I hope that the legislators don't do away with past TIF as of now so that we can deal with that. Give us some years to deal with that. But, yeah, I think we need to be cautious going forward on new stuff.
Yeah, and I, I would, yeah, I would just very much encourage you that this is the time. I would think that if you feel like you need some help and, you know, modeling on the financial side of it. Seems like a really good time to get somebody involved who, that's kind of their thing, right?
Think we've ever utilized more than about forty percent of what we could anyway. I mean, so I'm not saying that that.
Which is helpful, yeah.
Means things aren't tight, but.
You're describing it correctly in that. You know, if, if you assume a twenty dollar per thousand milliliter rate or levy rate. This would protect five dollars and forty cents of that. So roughly a twenty-five percent. Hit on a, a twenty dollar per thousand TIF levy rate. Uh, you know, if you're a little lower than that, it's going to be closer to a third. That's just kind of ballparking it. And the, most of that money that they're protecting is actually protecting state budget, not school district. Because the, the schools get a makeup payment under the current regimen from the state. For that dollar amount. So what, what we're talking about is the state. Stopping its contributions to local economic development and blight fighting projects. That, that's what's really, to my mind, on the table.
Cutting more backfill, basically.
Right.
Cutting, yeah.
Well, takes it off their hands and then basically tells everybody to stop the, Danny development. Because now you're probably not going to have the money to do it.
School gets it whether it comes from the state or it comes from us, but. Our economic development goes.
It's coming from those counties that don't utilize, don't have the ability to TIF like we've had. That's one reason it's coming from. There's a lot of counties that don't have that ability, but we've had to go. That's what's hurting, but. Yeah, so anyway, caution is the name, right? The main word right here. I don't think it's the tool we're going to lose. I think it's just, we might be, we might be changing how we utilize it. The dollars, the, you know, the nice part of it.
Dollars may not be there.
Right now, the nice part, we have to utilize all those dollars, otherwise pretty much goes back to those entities. I mean, at least for a timeframe.
But you might have a smaller debt service stream going forwards. You might not be able to do as many projects.
Projects or bigger projects.
And then you got to prioritize and see what we actually need. Do we need the roads? Do we need the, yeah, I don't know. And if it doesn't have anything to do with the terminal, we need to find out what the valuation is going to be there.
That's one thing we've got to know.
We know what we're working with there that doesn't have to touch the wind turbines.
What was that?
Is our county right of way, road right of way?
I don't know. Do you know if our entire county road right of ways, are they in a urban renewal? This, that's not very common, is it?
It, it's not uncommon, but honestly, it's more than I know. I would have to look back at, through all of your prior amendments.
They wouldn't have to do this every time they want to do a roadway project or in the instance of a gas line or something that would be already included.
But I, I do want to, I do want to emphasize because I, I hear that comment and. Let's just be clear, this lawyer doesn't think what was just stated is accurate. Because geographically, you could add all of the road right of way in the county. But when a new bridge project gets identified that hasn't already been approved. As a distinct urban renewal project, we'd still be needing to come back and amend the plan. With this process that I described to tell the world, we're spending TIF on this bridge project.
Yeah, there's no way you could.
It'd be project specific, but not necessarily location specific.
Would not be location specific. You'd have to amend it to, yes. So is it uncommon for counties to just put their whole county in an urban renewal district?
Yes, it's, it's damn near impossible because of that ag land owner. That ag land owner consent requirement that I mentioned. You would literally have to go out and get permission from every ag land owner in the county to make that move. And I'm not sure any of us would be alive by the time we got around to getting all those consents.
No, that's.
So that, that has been the reason why. Particularly with county areas, we, we have really not seen, you know, a bunch of. Real big, broad areas because you do have to, you've got to be able to chase those ag land owner consents. And it's one thing when it's the developing property owner that wants in because they want the TIF. Of course, they're going to consent. It's something entirely different when it's neighboring parcels that have nothing to do with anything that's developing soon. So.
So we need to start gathering information then. On what we want to include with this update, correct?
Yeah.
You're going to have to go to the assessor for the wind turbines because I haven't seen anything.
They just got stuff started.
I think she's still working.
Well, they just come in and thought.
And then the, the last, the last thing I'd add just by way of preview of the overall process. We've talked through the updating of your urban renewal plan this morning, right? That's what we've talked about. That is really, in some ways, just a prerequisite for what you're really trying to get to. Which is the final step of identifying and approving. TIF debt obligations, right? Because you, you don't get TIF. Unless you've gone into some kind of a debt obligation eligible to be paid from the TIF. Like the debt service levy for GO bonds. You don't just get to go levy it because you feel like it. You get to go levy it because you've got GO debt outstanding. The same with TIF claims. You only claim and receive TIF if you've entered into debt. So if you use my two examples for projects, a private development at the business park. And the, you know, pipeline infrastructure project. Well. Your TIF debt for the developing business might be a rebate type agreement. Where the developer agrees to create some jobs or to invest in their development. And if they are successful and the valuations go up, they get some TIF rebate over a period of years. That would be a very common type of TIF debt for a private business incentive. Whereas the pipeline. You know, maybe it's something like the credit support that you've talked about where. Um, in a sense, we're sort of cosigning or, or providing some credit support to somebody else's financing. Or maybe you go borrow some money from a bank and provide an upfront grant or what, whatever. It could take any number of different forms, some of which your lawyer will scold you for and others he won't. But the bottom line is it's your call and. So it can take any number of forms, but I just want to emphasize. Amending the urban renewal plan is the first step, but it's not the final step. The final step is what are the deals we're striking? What are the credit deals, you know, obligations that we're going to enter into? In order to provide the county inputs into these projects that we're planning on providing. Then we certify those TIF obligations as a claim on future TIF. That way, if valuation is there in the future, Jackie's office, when they administer the property taxes. They will divide it up and the TIF goes into the TIF fund to then repay your debts. That closes the loop.
So what different, is there different paperwork or something for, has anybody done guarantees before versus actually?
Yeah, we've, we've done them. I, I'm gonna.
Having, I'm having trouble wrapping my head around that dollar wise, you know, how, how long they have to.
That's appropriate. And the, the reality is. The state law is not going to give you the answers to those questions, right? I mean, the, the bottom line, as a guarantor. Right? As the party providing the credit support. The only way we're going to know the answer to those kind of questions, Jackie. Is by first understanding what's the credit deal that we are supporting, right? I mean, if I'm, you know, my kid Joe goes and enters into some loan. And I tell him I'll co-sign on it or I'll guarantee it and I sign something for his lender that says, yep, I'm the guarantor. If I haven't read the loan documents between Joe and his bank. I have no idea what my rights and responsibilities are as the credit supporter, right? So what, one guarantee can look a heck of a lot different than another. And it's got to start with, what's the relationship between the underlying bank and the lender? How's the money flowing? What are the terms of that? And what is that lender expecting of us? As the entity standing behind their borrower, right? That's the only way we're ever going to get to answer those questions. The, the Iowa law is not going to fill in those blanks.
Because as long as they make the payments, we're okay, but.
Right.
If in five or 10 years, however long this lasts, and we have to come up with a big lump sum at the end. And then we'll have a loan for how many more years after that.
That's why I want us to be nosy about what this means if we, if we're doing this kind of arrangement. Because, you know, lo- local governments have particular needs. I mean, you, you guys have the ability to, to raise a, really a great deal of revenue. Whether it's through TIF or debt service levy or whatever. But you oftentimes can't do that just by waving a wand. You need time to go by and property taxes to get paid and all of that. So if I have my way. We're going to structure this relationship, if that's where we're going. Where that, in a way that takes into account some of those challenges that you folks face as a county. I would rather not, you know, if this is a $10 million loan or whatever. I, I'm going to fight tooth and nail to try to make sure that the lender doesn't have the right to quote unquote accelerate that loan. Just because of a single default by the borrower. And all of a sudden you folks are being presented with a, well, pay us the 10 million bucks in 30 days. No. We, we don't, we can't work that way, right? I mean, that, that. Or we could, but you're going to go spend gobs of money to get some kind of a standby letter of credit or something. You may as well just go borrow the money yourself if it's going to come to that. Uh, don't, please, no.
No.
But you, you, you see what I, you see what I'm saying.
Would we be putting so much money away every year just in case or we just have to be ready to go?
If I, if I have my way, I would like to, to have this set up on terms that are acceptable to you folks. In a way that if you have to step in. That there's a transition period where you're able to step in and. You know, probably have a fork in the road, right? Because it's one thing if you have a default by the borrower because they're $4,000 short making this year's payment. And it's a temporary cash flow blip. It's another thing altogether if they've gone belly up and they're insolvent and declaring bankruptcy, right? And particularly if it's the latter, we need to make sure that there's a transition period. Where this thing kind of gets handed off and converted to county debt. Where you guys have the ability to amortize it out over a period of years and use the property tax system. But presumably with TIF collections to be able to service it over time. And not like I, not just inherit a $10 million football, right? So we're going to have to, we're not going to solve all this today. We have to hear more about what is the loan that we are guaranteeing? And what, Adam, what's the minimum that the lender needs to see from you? In order for that credit to flow and then we push back from there. I mean, I.
And would we end up with, would we end up with a gas line or would we end up with nothing and just debt?
No, we should end up with a gas line, I would think.
If we actually guarantee the loan.
Again, that, that's going to be.
Written into the.
That, I think that the devil's going to wind up being in the details. I mean, I don't know if the lender is taking a mortgage in the gas line. And presumably if you're stepping into the shoes of the borrower in that type of a scenario. We should be able to work it out where if the borrower is gone and we've had to pay the whole thing off. That we wind up owning the gas line if, if that's really what you want to do.
But I wouldn't want to let it lay there in the ground and be gone either.
Better than having nothing.
Well, we kind of did that with water and wastewater.
Yeah.
We ended up with a water and wastewater system. Yay. On a smaller scale, anyway.
Yeah.
Million and six or something like that, yeah. We have stuff that's not finished and needs to, needs more money to get rolling. Lots of stuff.
Yeah, lots of stuff to do and think about here.
And it's 10.
It's 10 for you, so.
Excellent. Well, keep me posted. If we are doing anything like kind of TIF rebate type deals. We have a worksheet that we typically have clients fill out. For us to be able to kind of mine for facts as we draft up your documents. So. Somebody let me know if we think one or more of those might be. Involved with this. And if questions come up, you know how to find me, so.
Yep, yep, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Keep moving forward here and see what we can do.
Sounds good.
We got to wait till legislature figures out what they're going to do.
That'll be something we need to talk to them on Thursday about.
Big difference.
When we're down there.
Yeah, give them, give them a shout, help them make up their mind.
Well, we'll be in their face on Thursday hopefully. So we'll actually be down there. Maybe we'll get to talk to a couple of them. Well, we'll be in their face on Thursday hopefully, so we'll actually be down there. Maybe we'll get to talk to a couple of them, so.
Excellent.
Okay, well, thank you.
You bet. Good luck. Have a good day.
I mean, there's definitely something to talk to those about. You cannot take that, you know, what's tipped already. That's just going to kill us.
We're, we're fortunate that.
Very fortunate.
We're getting to the end of a cycle. But it's not going to allow us to go forward any further, but I mean. But like I said, we're fortunate enough that we've got our stuff paid off or if they do not grandfather in, we're. Then we're in a decent position that we're about done with. We're just going to take on a bunch of debt two years ago and now we're going to lose out on it.
But then we have nowhere to go either.
What good does it do to tip the windmills if the state's not going to backfill the schools?
So the difference would be on the new stuff going ahead of what I've read and my understanding is schools will get their money. We'll still have. Forty percent of the left, which that's what we've been tipping. We've basically been tipping, I think our tip death somewhere in that forty percent.
Either we pay it or the school pays it. If we tip the windmills and let them use that formula, the state pays it.
Some kind, we should probably, you probably should have been, as long as we got it paid off, you should be going sixty, eighty percent because that money is just basically sitting there. It's like you just will utilize and get it paid off, but now it's going to force you to, instead of doing forty percent, you're probably going to want to drop back to twenty percent.
Still comes down to if the state's not going to backfill the school systems. With almost, what is it, fifty-five to sixty percent? In this urban, what good does it do? The only plate that are coming out ahead on the TIF is the windmill corporation.
Cause we'd get the.
Because we're not getting that backfill from the state anymore.
That money, yeah.
You're still ear watching the.
Windmills don't gain any, they, they've already got that formula or whatever. There's a gain or whatever. It's just, and it wouldn't change how they pay. They tax and it's not going to change anything what they pay. That, that's not changing. School system, the state don't roll on, roll back though. They haven't wanted to backfill for years. Ever since I've been on it, every year it's been in the legislative proposal to take away the backfill. It's always gotten filled.
And that's what we use for economic development is the backfill.
Well, we're actually probably not, yeah, I mean, we.
We're using that sixty percent that they give to our local school systems and NIAC as a backfill from the state. That's the economic development to help you grow your county. If they're not going to do that anymore, then what good does it do to give the windmill companies? The TIF deal other than that they come here and they only got to pay thirty percent down the road.
We'd still be able to utilize TIF on whatever is left. If I understand. They're going to get their money. Yeah, they're getting it no matter what, but now instead of it coming from state, it'll come from the revenue produced in this county.
Right.
From the increment.
From the increment.
We won't get the increment anymore from their share.
Yeah, we won't get their comment from there.
So it'll cost us, it'll cost us thirty to forty percent in future development.
Because we got to pay that. School tax. We got paid schools.
Which if the turbines or the project of manly terminal don't come, the schools wouldn't get that money in.
Right, right, but I'm not talking. Because there it's a different deal where. Same tip, but you get corporations there and you can get them off the ground and get them going and on their feet. That's where TIF comes in. It's a good deal for them. I'm talking about the windmills.
Reason they started this twenty some years ago down state level is to get them, to get them in and get them going.
And that's how they came in at the backfield on a school tax.
That you did with Chris Diggs to just give them a break for.
They're not proposing to change how they tax the wind towers. They pay their X amount of dollars.
That's all I'm going to be saying.
Okay, so then what we're looking at is how we utilize it. Right now, the way we tip, the schools get backfilled, right? From the state, no other taxing entity gets any of that tip. Now what they're trying to change is, okay, we'll give the schools their money out of the tip. And still know their taxing entities, hospitals, whatever, don't get any of the money yet. So the only difference is. Schools will get money, but none of the other taxing entities, the auditoriums, they won't get any part of that levy. It'll still be the same tip, just reduced. The schools get theirs. So that's the only difference. Whereas if at all, if we didn't tip anything, then everything goes to everybody's levy gets a little bit. So all they're doing is changing the school section, the school portion of.
I think they're changing everybody's section. Not exactly sure.
The school is the only one that they.
School is the only thing that they backfill, right?
But I think everybody's going to get their money if they pass this.
So then, then.
I, I could be wrong. I need.
No, it's the way I understand. It's just the schools.
Just the schools?
Basically, if there's one million dollars and we were to utilize uh seventy percent of that TIF. Um, the state would backfill the school or whatever. So instead of us utilizing that seventy percent, they're going to take the, the money, give it to the schools. So now it's going to drop us down to forty percent. Uh, ability. So instead of, instead of, you know, having, you know, starting with the million and then you're working your way down. So every million, you may only use four hundred thousand.
Or a smaller payment stream.
Yeah, right.
Not what was available before.
If they do this. Whatever they backfill for the schools will not be available to us.
I guess that's what I'm hearing too.
Whatever they backfill in schools will not be available.
Anybody but the schools or the state, the state actually is their advantage. Taxes don't change.
And they've already did the industrial commercial with that ten percent backfill. They're not going to do that down the road here, but I think we're phased in.
Yeah, we're phasing out.
We're phased out of it. It's a five year phase for us. So they already took that away. You know, they came out with that one and now they took it away. So they're taking part of this money that they're backfilling off the TIF with the schools and using it for mental health.
And there were portions of the school. Levy that was already taken out of it. I mean, we've had, what was, whatever debt stuff they had. We, we already had to let them have that, but now whatever else they're going to. They're going to get all their whole levy instead of just portions of it.
I imagine they're paying for mental health somehow. But it would be nice for us with all these things. Coming in a pipeline down the road to know where the state's going to, where the state's standing on this thing.
Before you jump in.
Like I said, if you don't build it, they don't get nothing.
Well, and we're going to have to take on some kind of debt because we're about out of debt. Or else we'll be able to utilize what's left.
And the years are left.
Um, this year you have to take on debt.
Some of the old.
One bond of old, the other two we got rid of last year or this year and last year. Yeah, getting rid of them here and then one we got rid of last year. We took that two million and paid it off.
I think we're paying off two thousand twelve this year.
Could be.
There wasn't much left. I was just thinking two thousand nine, two thousand ten tips. They were roughly a total of, was it, was it even ten million dollars? So we paid off. Two thousand twelve, right? We paid that off last year. Two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, and.
That was. Two thousand ten. But they're still. There's no money coming in because I didn't use all the money from. Wherever the resource was.
What's left for tips?
When you say that they got to do something, what? We got, we got to specify some that.
Yeah, there's something in your urban renewal plan, otherwise you can't tip.
Goes back to ends in the general tax.
You're going to have something in the pipeline that says, here's what we're going to use it for.
That just, just has to be something.
Yeah, that's the caution part. Right, well, now it's definitely the caution. You know, well, or is it, you know, if you know you're going to be grandfathered in, do you rush into this and get this stuff covered before?
But also we're on, we're on the whole timeline now, so we're not looking at, you know, isn't it twenty years you have the TIF? But now we're into a spot where if we take out that now, we've only got eight years to pay it off versus or. A little longer than what the value of the life cycle is.
Well, isn't it? I mean, the tip was a twenty year deal. So once that twenty years is up, I mean, it's not say the turbines disappeared.
Right, but I mean, if you take out a loan at year nineteen, you only have one year to pay that loan back because after that, your twenty years is up.
Way I understand it.
So as the, as the, as these. Time to pay off the debt.
Cause I would guess, you know, the one just on the west, you said the interstate, that one's going to be the oldest, next oldest. The Bristol farm's already off. That goes into budget. And so then the one on the west east side of the interstate, that's got to be within a couple of years, three, four years.
To pay. Why does it get?
No, that doesn't get paid off until June of twenty six. Unless we. Twelve. And two thousand fourteen will be paid off.
Right, until John comes.
Okay. The extra.
And we'll let you hop on if you're ready, John. When you're ready.
You wanna get the taxi or?
Sure.
Joel keeps it warm.
It chilly last night.
Good morning.
How you doing, John?
I'm good. How are you all? Couple of things. I think the first thing I would talk about would be ongoing activity in the waters of the United States. This is an issue that just doesn't seem like it wants to go away. Coming back wrong. Yeah.
My apologies.
Okay. In going back, I don't know, ten, twelve years ago, what federal regulations said is that EPA had the ability to regulate navigable waters. Navigable was the key word there. So that had commercial implications that had, you know, put a boat in and go somewhere kind of deal. Obama administration came in and during the Obama administration, the word navigable was taken out. So at that point, it said EPA could regulate any puddle in the United States. That was challenged in court and a federal district court judge put a stay on that so that in Iowa, that never went into effect, although it was there, the courts stopped it. Trump administration comes in and says, we're gonna go back the other way and goes through the role making process and essentially to simplify things, went back to the old rule. Now we have Biden administration, so the ping pong balls go any other way. And the Biden administration says that we want to rewrite the rule and the, the key consideration here is that they're talking about reinstating the, the concept of what they call nexus. And that's, that's very, very concerning if you don't know what it means because nexus is, is a definition that they can use to say that some body of water might be connected through another body of water that's 10 miles away. And potentially that if, if EPA gets control of all waters, including drainage districts where that puts you all in terms of trustees for the districts is potentially having to get permission from DNR before you would do any drainage repairs or improvements. Cause DNR is this state agency that is responsible for enforcing the Clean Water Act. And of course, in the Clean Water Act is deemed to mean drainage. That means you're gonna have to be knocking on their door anytime you want to do a repair or improvement. I think you all understand that's not a place we want to be. So IDDA did go on record in opposition to the new rule. You know, I guess a good thing about this is nothing happens fast. So what will happen is EPA will take all of these comments and supposedly review them and make a decision on what they want to keep and what they want to not keep and they'll put a final rule into effect. And at that point, they'll be sued. Because no matter what they do, they'll be sued. And you'll probably find a judge somewhere that'll put a stay on the rule until some of the issues are resolved. So this is not going to be something that changes overnight and that's a good thing, but I, it does bear watching. And we're gonna watch it very closely and, and see if we need to do anything to, to provide further input. And certainly we'll keep you all posted in terms of what's going on. Next thing I'd talk about would be action at the state legislature. I, you know, I would say first of all that we we had success last year with the legislative proposal that we took into the process. Two big things that that did, I think both of which potentially saved your landlord some money. The first thing is that the law used to say that if you were doing a classification or reclassification, you had to publish the entire assessment schedule. And when you, that schedule, of course, has every little assessment and could be multiple pages long and publishing that. I have one county tell me, one of their reclassifications cost in excess of $10,000 to publish that information. And of course, that cost gets passed back to the landlords. And the drainage clerks were coming to us and saying, you know, why are we, why are we publishing information that the landlords are already received? Yeah, so we were able to get that changed and get that requirement taken out. The second thing relates to when you have the responsibility or the legal ability, not legal ability, but the legal restriction to hire an engineer for a drainage repair. What the law used to say was that if you had any repair exceeding $50,000, you needed to get an engineer's opinion. And I had a number of counties tell me, you know, $50,000 in today's age is nothing. I mean, you get there really, really quickly. So there was sentiment to change that and then, you know, the question becomes, what did we change it to? And we had some legislators that wanted to go as high as, I think one said $400,000. And that seemed a little extreme to spend that kind of money without an engineer's report. So there's a thing in state law called the competitive bid threshold and that's used in a number of different projects. So we decided to tie into that competitive bid threshold. That is a number set by committee. It's not set by the legislature. So we can go up and down as market conditions warrant. And right now that's at $139,000. So we tied the engineering requirement to the competitive bid threshold. So now you can go on a repair up to $139,000 without the necessity of hiring an engineer. Certainly you can for less than that if you wish to, that's you know, what we're trying to do here is give you all some flexibility. And if you wanted to, if it's a routine repair and you don't think an engineer needs to look at it and you're under that $139,000, you can go ahead and order the repair. So that was the second part of the bill. Third part of the bill came to us from a state senator and, and her, her concern was she said, you know, I have a number of snowbirds in my county that, that, you know, leave December 1st and come back April 1st and may not get their mail in the meantime and may not get drainage notices. So can we put in a provision in the law called informal notes? And basically, for lack of a better term, that's an email. So landlord says, hey, if, if you've got something proposed in the district, can you just email me a copy? But that's an informal notice. We didn't want to say formal because when you say formal notice, that kicks out a whole different section of state law that we, we didn't want to go to. So this is basically an informal email notice. So those three things were in the bill. We got the bill passed the House, I think 97 to nothing and passed the Senate 47 to two. And to the governor's office and Governor Reynolds signed the bill and that went into effect July 1st. So that is law now and we're feeling good about that. I mentioned briefly that there's a number, another proposal out there that you all may have received some emails on that leads to Senate File 500 that talks about a number of changes in drainage law. That's not an IDDA sponsored bill. We're currently registered as opposed to it because we, we, the, the board just felt, the IDDA board felt that there were so many changes going on there that we just needed to slow down and take a look at things and, you know, what's the rush? So, and we haven't seen a copy of the bill yet. And I don't think anybody has. It's not been produced yet. So, you know, we, we don't think that there need, a necessity to rush to make substantial changes in drainage law. Part of my board is saying basically, you know, what, what's, what's driving this? You know, we talked about legislation at our annual conference and I didn't, I, I, I have not had one county supervisor tell me that 20 years I've been doing this job, that we need to rewrite drainage laws. Wholesale changes in drainage laws. So not to say that bill doesn't have some good things in it. It, it potentially does, but we just need some time to digest all of that, make a decision. If that's the way to go or if, if there's changes to need to be made to that to move forward. So anyway, that's where we are on that. Another thing I'll talk about briefly. You know, I don't know if you all are in the, the path of some of these carbon pipelines that have been talked about.
Not as of yet, not that I know of.
Okay. Just to let you all know that go back to the days of Dakota Access Pipeline. IDDA was approached by, by counties that were on the, on the path there saying, you know, what can we do to protect drainage infrastructure? So we put together a resolution that protects drainage infrastructure and puts requirements on anybody trying to come in and do a pipeline like that. And we had several counties pass that. And that did withstand, you know, some, some pushback as you would expect from the pipeline companies. Pipeline company did not, did not know until they got into it exactly how much authority drainage districts had to control the right away. And I, I can remember early in the process when Dakota Access was still just on the drawing board that I had a phone call in my office from somebody identifying themselves from Dakota Access and they, they said, how many drainage districts are there in the state? They said, well, you know, exact number is sort of up in the air, but 3,700, 3,800. There was this dead silence on the other end of the phone. And so, you know, we put that resolution together and we know that it works. And since then, we've been contacted by other counties that had high cap, capacity transmission lines going through our wind farms. And now the carbon pipeline. So there, there is a tool out there that we have available that if you need to use it, we can, we can make that available to you. And we know it'll at least so far stand up in, in the court of law. Also talk about a grant program that IDDA is involved with. We were approached a year and a half ago by a, a group that is part of the Iowa Soil耕 Association about joining them with a grant that they were putting together for the federal government to begin our CS for what they're termed in conservation drainage and to encourage the use of conservation drainage. And what conservation drainage says, you know, for lack of, you know, right now, when you all are draining land, you're, you're, you're doing that with the idea that we're, we're getting as much water off the land as quickly as possible. Maybe we have too much. But we all know with the Iowa climate that we have times we have too much water and we have time, we have not enough water. So conservation drainage says, first of all, maybe there's a way we can hold some of that water back so that when we need it in the future, we can use it. And of course, there are companies out there that have construction control structures that can go underground, that can store more of the water in the soil profile as opposed to draining it off right away. We also have, you know, some areas where they're using holding basins or, or wetlands to hold water as opposed to just draining it off the land. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that when you all are doing a drainage improvement, right now what happens is bigger versions of, you know, the mains are, are, are put in. That's basically what an improvement is. And what conservation drainage would say is that as long as we're doing this, we probably have a landscape, maybe we can incorporate some conservation structures into that. So maybe we can incorporate a wetland or incorporate a bioreactor or incorporate a saturated buffer or any number of things to make, to help make drainage a more environmentally friendly process. Now the, the rub with that is that you all as drainage trustees representing your districts do not have the ability to assess back to your landlords the cost of, of a water quality improvement. That's not within your authority. So that has to be be paid for and done under a separate app. Can I give you an example that we have a county right now that is looking at a substantial improvement and they are, have engineered a wetland into that. And the wetland is gonna be paid for by idols under a separate funding stream. And what we're doing under this grant, what we hope to do is that if you have landowners voluntarily want to input a conservation practice on their land as part of this improvement, it can be paid for under the auspices of the grant. So that that could be made part of the improvement without any of that cost being assessed back to the man. So IDDA is one of, I don't know, 20 plus partners that are looking at this, but just wanted to make you all aware of that and the kind of things we're thinking about. So with that, I'd be happy to respond to questions.
Not really.
Just one comment about that. So 500 was, and we just had a county engineers email back response while we were sitting here was that the, the verbiage for hiring an engineer was the county supervisors shall, shall appoint the county engineer or another, we don't like that term because it's supposed to be a disinterested party as the engineer. And because we have right away in drainage districts, we are not, in our opinion, disinterested in the project. So, or the other, the other, the other question was there could be a landowner who does, there could be an engineer who also owns land in the drainage district. They would also be disinterested. So they just want to say disinterested engineer, not specifically say shall be, shall appoint the county engineer or another one. They want to get rid of that verbiage. And then there was also verbiage in there too about, you've got this threshold for competitive bidding, but then if it's less than 70,000, then this, then if it's between 70,000 and 139 and it's this, it's really getting to be too many stages.
They've got seven tiers in there.
Yeah, it's crazy. And it's just, there's a lot of red, red ink in there and it has to do with engineers' bonds in one section. And then it's all competitive bid versus if it's smaller, like if it's $25,000, it was a lump sum deal. It wasn't, it was just kind of crazy. It just seems like there's more into it than really needs to be, but yeah. But as long as you keep the county engineers out of it, we're then disinterested in them.
Well, again, our point is what's
And you weren't, and you weren't, and your, your, your association isn't on board. And I'm sure that
Yeah.
because it got sent to the county engineers, we're probably not gonna be on board with a lot of them either.
Well, there's about 30, 30 groups and individuals sort of registered from the bill. And there's not one single group of individuals registered as, as being favored at this point.
There's gotta be some things that change that, to me, these changes aren't something that is really hurting the drainage district part of things. If there's changes need made, there should be different places where changes are made and not necessarily what they're trying to change.
Yeah. Where are we at? Is a Reckon water lawsuit, is that one over?
Yes, that one was dismissed.
Yeah, so, so far so good.
We don't have any new ones.
You know, we continue to watch and we have, you know, the, the concern we have and what, you know, to go back to waterworks lawsuit. One of the main reasons that the judge friend dismissed the case is he said basically what the, what the lawsuit is, is asking, is, is asking the courts to do is, is to put you all, the drainage trustees and in charge of of issues that you don't have any control over. You, you don't have the ability to tell farmers how to farm and tell farmers to plant cover crops or put a wetland in or anything like that. And the judge said, you know, this, this is what is contemplated in the lawsuit. And that's one of the reasons he dismissed it. So we, you know, there, there is a bill up there in the legislature right now. It's not gonna go anywhere that would, you know, on an optional basis, give you all the ability to do conservation practices. You, you open that door. That's the other thing about Senate File 500. You open that door and have a bill on the floor. Everything's fair game.
Right.
You know? If you can tell me, I'll pass this bill and nobody's gonna change it and there's not gonna be any amendments and this is gonna go through clean. That's fine, but there are no guarantees in the process. So you gotta be careful with that. And that's, that's one of the reasons we, we watch it so closely.
And he brought, he brought the waters of the US thing too. Went back and forth. And at one time they wanted to, whether it was a dry stream bed or not, they want to control, he said puddle.
Yep.
It was including every roadway ditch.
Yep.
Because it conveys water. And that means anytime we do a ditch clean or anything, they wanted us to, and it was just totally it was illogical to try to control that. And I don't think the DNR would want that kind of responsibility.
No, I don't think they do either.
But somebody's not thinking, yeah.
Keep up the good fight for us.
We appreciate it, John. Yes.
Good to see you all. All right. All righty. See y'all.
Thank you.
Jeff, we're still in session, I guess. Oh, I, I happen to get done in court a little early. You've been usually gone. So I, I thought I would poke my head in. I have shared with you in this email that I will be in Vegas the week of the 20th. So no one do anything that gets the county in trouble.
Okay.
That week. But if there's any questions or concerns about anything, I guess that's, that's why I'm poking my head in.
We got you. You have that email.
Oh, that's
We're not coming to bail you out either. Better than Vegas State.
There you go.
We can't, we can't get you extra that.
All right. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn. I'll say
All right. I was embarrassed to say hi. Thank you.